Ready? Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. We're gonna start with our pledge of allegiance and then we're gonna have a moment of silence to recognize Roberta Bertie Price, who is a lifelong resident of the area, charter member of the Civil Age Fire Company at Gilary, and Kathy D. Dolly, mother of Catherine Dolly, who managed our corns campground.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Councilman Valentine is not here today. And we have our town attorney on Zoom today. So first, we're gonna start with a historical moment with our story. Tom, not well. Tom's all yours. Welcome back.
Thank you. By the way, my recent episode was an old Navy injury from walking the plank and being heel halt. Hi, everyone. I'm Tom, I believe, Tom's starting along with June, oh, he's here. Oh, yeah, thank you.
With the handsome face at the end.
I'm Tom, I believe, from the hotel. Normally, we provide history interviews for people that helped make Town of Warfield grow all the way back from the seventeen hundreds until now. But first, I just wanna wish George a happy birthday. No, not our George, Washington. He's two hundred and eighty-eight years old. Does George look like he's two hundred and eighty-eight years old?
Sometimes.
Well, you know, we're talking history here. Well, although our George, formerly named history, he kind of around, he made history with a landslide victories in his quest for supervisor, somewhat like George Washington, or he did. Anyway, there we see a purpose of a bit more in Town of Warfield. Considering upcoming National Seventy Point Centennial of the Two Hundred and Fiftyth Anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, the revolution that started in seventeen seventy-six, and that popular theme, Statue of Liberty. And you may not know. And there are little facts and information for all you need to determine for yourself what the subject represents. I present the whole thing of my own, and the people don't, you know, my own, you don't know that. So, I understand the other fact and information that I researched. The Statue of Liberty is a gift from the people of France to the people of the United States. So, of course, we have to have a phrase for it. What book is the Statue of Liberty holding? Anybody know? No?
A closing.
Is it a Bible? Is it a cookbook? Is it a dictionary? No, it's none of these. It's a law notebook that defines freedom, independence, and democracy. On the cover is written July Fourth, seventeen seventy-six. The inspiration for the statue was based on the American Revolution in seventeen seventy-six. But this is a big fight. Mostly the result of the American Civil Wars, with the abolition of slavery in eighteen fifty-five by the Thirteenth Amendment of the Constitution. Now, the broken shackles. Now, the, uh, the broken shackles at her feet. Now, you can only see those from the airplane because the statue's a hundred and fifty feet up in the air. But that's what it represents, a big blue. There was no thought about immigration at that time. The French creator of the statue was an anti-slavery activist in France. In eighteen eighty-three, the statue was finished in France and shipped to D. J. Stenmore. At this time, there was no pedestal to put the statue on. There were many fundraisers to gather enough money to build a pedestal. Now, at this time, the thought of freedom and independence started to improve and grace. There was a young woman, New York lady named Emma Lajic, who was a highly educated activist, was very involved in the integration of refugees from the anti-Semitic pogam. A pogam in Russia means organized mass terror of a particular ethnic group. That indigenous people in Russia and Eastern Europe in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. And her wrote a poem with the words, "The silent lips give me your tires, your four, your huddled masses, yearning to breathe free." It was primarily used as a poem for to help pay for the pedestal's pressures. Her poem was not directly associated with the statue and was not mentioned after the statue's opening in eighteen eighty-six. She died the next year, eighteen eighty-seven, eighty to thirty-eight. The poem fell into the low of security for years. Back in nineteen oh-one, the poem was read by a friend, and by nineteen oh-three, a practice made of the poem is placed inside the pedestal itself. The poem essentially changed the meaning of the statue and all of that, not the constitution. The change was from one of Republican's, which is Latin meaning freedom and independence, not the other part. To immigration and opportunity. So there you have it covered, but maybe it's not a problem by the meaning of the Statue of Liberty, but the help of a young lady and a friend. A footnote, the Statue of Liberty originally meant was the Statue of Liberty enlightening the world. Go away with a light torch. Some people think the torch light statue represents Satan or Lucifer. Well, in truth, the word Lucifer is from Latin, it simply means light. Oh, yes, this one, a footnote, meanings to consider, meat, which can mean all solid foods, a word stain. In nineteen twenty, yeah, gay men, happy, and now today, some point mean. Another confusing word today is gender, not sex. Oh, yes, and I do have one more. So, little, little, yeah, Valentine's Day thing. How did the lovebird begin Valentine's Day party? Anybody? You're my sweetheart.
Thank you, Tom.
Good for diamond.
Always, um, in Latin, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, next, um, so about two years ago, they came up, you know, somebody came to me about restarting the Junior Police Academy. And, you know, unfortunately, with the things that are going on in the world, you know, people don't look at the good things that they might have putting something like this together. So, we have a young lady here who was in the Junior Police Academy and took what was taught to her by the officers involved and detectives involved and used it. This is not the first time that this has happened at Town of Warfield. And it just shows that us bringing back the Junior Police Academy is something good and is something that's needed to show to our young people that police officers are good, they're here for good. So, this was brought to my attention, and we've been trying to get this young lady here to recognize that, because I think it's important that she knows that we see it, we appreciate it, and it was something good that she did. So, I'm gonna call up Officer Roberto and also, I'm gonna try to say your name, I'm gonna give it a shot. Banga one day, I tried, alright, I tried, I tried. And they're gonna help me introduce this young lady, and we're going to honor her. Step up. This young lady, um, is one of my outstanding with DPR, that she's known at the Police Department to save the life. That right there, we have a young person saving a life. What more can you add to her? So, I'm gonna have the rich, destiny, power, and that, and that, the lady, come on up, step right up. Let me tell you, that'd be the key. So, I'm gonna have Officer Roberto saying with some words, absolutely.
I would just like to thank the Police Department and the council for the support of bringing this program back. Obviously, we've been able to start reaching people, teaching them not only life-saving skills, but we teach kids how to work as a team, how to be appreciated of their community. And just let them get to know us, is there an opportunity to see police officers as more than just uniforms and a patrol car? And we are very grateful to have that opportunity. Luckily, this year, we've been able to move the program up, we've got a lot more resources for it, so we're gonna be expanding. We have a lot of stuff we wanna add this year, and I just hope people keep getting the word out. We're happy to have kids come join us and was very grateful to have this opportunity and support from the families. I know it's not easy to just drop your child off with a bunch of police officers in the morning and hope that they're still the same and maybe better when they come back in the afternoon. So, we appreciate that trust and we appreciate all of you and the town and the Police Department. So, thank you, everybody, for your support of this program. I'm still excited to be here.
This is an important program that I would like to expand if possible, because getting them also, you have a lot of officers involved, every different week, and you go up in each academy. And they take time out of their lives to do this, you know, they, you know, to have this film and to see what we've done with the Junior Police Academy. All because of this young officer here who has put all this together and to see this, and again, this is not the first time. So, this is an important program that we have, and we're going to continue it. But again, congratulations on behalf of the town board and the staff and the town. Good job. Andy, you wanna come up? Somebody wanna come up? Yeah, let's stay up here, if I can get my notes. Well, everybody, everyone know, you know, and they recognize, you know, communicating about it, especially, you know, the real future. One day we will, you know, we die, and we could be the one another. The town, the citizens, running a promotion. And I always try to recognize that we need to are doing good in the community in the town. Town of Warfield has five different school districts, and we reach out to each district to, and honor that Christian law to do that's a living to, um, for they feel that much, you know, good, and it's a great time to recognize a black Christian. Just before somebody says this, black Christian. Why do we have? You go wait for the message. I would say a couple of words, but, um, so what is black Christian? You know, we celebrate it every February and what is it? And how we started? And we got Bishop Brown here, who correctly, if I got something wrong. Part of G. Brits. He would start with dedicating, had dedication to celebrate the historic contribution of African-Americans. And start with annual celebration to look at the achievement of African-Americans in the time of their sin, of their role in the history of the US. Jesse Owens, who is the world at the Sunday Olympia, said, "We all have dreams. In order to make dreams come into reality, it takes an awful lot of determination, dedication, self-discipline, and effort." Recognizing these young individuals today show the dedication and start their road to their life, to their adulthood. I would like to have Bishop Brown come up, say a couple of words. Couple of words. I'll have to go that again. As everyone knows, our town has a great relationship with Bishop Brown's, um, our fifth of concert in the city of Metropolis. And you said, "They're fine, they're fine, they're fine, they're fine, we better live together." We can't just be a community with this Town of Warfield, we have to be a community of seven of them. You cannot fish on the water, we have to work together. I think that first and that's what is lost in this world, this country today, twenty twenty-four, working together. The God is not happening and have the common goal. I always say, what is the common goal? What is the, we want, what, what is the agenda? What do you want to do? We wanna come together as one and try to work together, regardless of who or what you think, what you believe in. Because the common goal is the best for the union, what's best for everyone. It's John's and I'm mine.
I wasn't gonna let you off the hook.
But I also like to, I always like to listen to them, because of their voice. They have a voice for radio, but also the US office, so I, you know, I got that great voice, yeah, that.
Good afternoon, good evening, I should say, to you again, thank you to the Town of Warfield for not only its vision and its insight, but the leadership that prompts not only our town supervisor, hey, well, but everyone. But everyone in the community to recognize them. That's an old song, it's kind of a pop song that says, "I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. Give them a sense of pride to make it easy for them. Let the children laugh." And so I say those words in that song because it is an honor indeed to be here tonight to recognize not only the history of black, black, black Americans that have celebrated in this month, but the history as, and the fact that they are indeed Americans. And so while we stand here today, it is indeed an honor to watch as these young people come forward and for us to be able to recognize them collectively as people of America as opposed to black Americans. And let me just say this last but not least, that when we think about black history, we cannot have black history without having all of American history, because if you break the word history down, it represents his stories or the stories of every single person that is gonna part of building this great nation. So, let us strive to indeed be one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We don't start with a large city district border. And we need to, we have, we have the school district, we're trying with the Princeton family, I don't know, you guys know that, is that so right? Come on up. First invite Evan Bryant first. A little bit about Evan. Evan is a bright young man who shows the utmost respect at all times. He comes from a family of bright young men who show respect at all times. He has two brothers that are here to support him this evening. Evan, just to tell you a little bit about him, he's an eighth grader who is taking three high school courses at this time, in biology, algebra, and global. I'm sorry, not algebra, biology, global, and English nine. Three high school courses in eighth grade. In addition to being respectful, he works hard with a ninety-six overall average, you know, he's taking high school courses in the hood state. And with all great young men, he represents his school and community by getting involved in activities at the school. Evan is a wrestler in Middletown, not on the modified team, but actually, I don't know, he'll be one of the high state teams. So, he's a, he's a really bright, like I said, respectful young man, he has a respectful family, and he's doing great things in middle school. And we're so excited to see what his future holds for him and for the community of Warfield. So, congratulations, great job. There's Christopher Checker on here. Christopher is another recipient from one of the Middletown schools, I'm not, I think he's from the high school, I don't know Christopher. That will definitely bring us back working as well. Bishop, thank you so much for your, thank you. That is, uh, I can see him hanging in through the, impressive. Um, next, uh, the new ocean is not here. Uh, I know from ocean, medicine. They're not here. Next, we go to two partners. We got Stu, who's coming by tonight. That's school board member, George Yampin.
Follow me.
All areas, you guys. Yes, George, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Alright, good evening. Let's take this opportunity, first, thank the Town of Warfield Board, this tremendous opportunity to be here this evening to recognize some of our fine students in the high school. With that being said, I'd like to begin India Law, I didn't know if something India is flying even yet. Alright, well, India's not here, but let me speak on our behalf regardless. India is an awesome young lady, she started going to CTECH in the high school, she's graduating, is here, she's going to education major, which again, we all know anything today, as the supervisor said, take the bill to raise the child. Going to education today is an awesome way to lead from the front, which leads me to my next young lady, Keela Lockson, who I know is here. She's a finance high school senior, who's awesome. Again, also going with the education was making me really proud, because you know what? As a, as a high school principal, alright, certainly, I'm afraid of elementary school students, but she's gonna pick up that torch and she's gonna lead from the front and become an elementary school teacher, she's gonna be going to the college in New Rochelle, and if I believe and correct, that's Iowa, correct? Which is awesome, and we're very proud of Keela.
Alright, Keela.
Keela, why don't you have your parents come up, love them up, please?
I was gonna say something, Alkeela is one of our Town of Warfield Police Division leaders.
That's a force on you, that's tremendous.
Thank you.
Very good, very good.
Speaking of another awesome young lady in the high school, this woman is personally, I have a special affinity for her family. This is London Fields. Come on up, London. And good thing about London, she's been working for another few more years, she's only a sophomore. And already as a sophomore, this young woman has become a leader in many different facets in the high school. In fact, when I looked at her grades the other day, and I'm going to make her pops pretty proud right now, all right? In fact, I looked at her grades the other day, and every one of those grades was in the high nineties, all right? That is something to be truly impressed for. High school's not easy. This young woman is an awesome role model. She makes me very proud, and I couldn't be prouder today to give London Fields the certificate representing the family. Come on, girl. It's a lot of time to make yourself where you are.
All right, sorry about that. We actually have that so too, but I'm trying to think about the Ross burns. Come on up.
Great to be here tonight. Uh, thank you to Toronto, thanks for the town of Warfield for allowing us to be here tonight. Uh, this is my second time being part of this, and this is one of my favorite evenings, just, uh, it's scary being here and celebrating together. This is a wonderful time. Uh, we have two students that we're recognizing tonight. Uh, first on the list is Kayden Jones, is Kayden here or his family? I did not see him coming in, but I'll make sure that he gets the, the message. We're so proud of Kayden, uh, his teaching, where I report that he's a great student in class, uh, that he's a pleasure, and very respectful. And, um, most importantly, um, and we're so proud of him, and we believe, uh, I'm talking about Kayden's family, the first one. I do his family, they go into college, so we're so proud of him and, uh, going to offer sacred graphic design. So congratulations, Kayden. And, uh, second student, Brandon Robinson, is Brandon here or his family? Okay, oh yes, we just come up here. I was killing it. Congratulations, man.
Thank you. He's on the phone.
Oh, okay, so he can hear us. How are we doing, Brandon, tonight? Good? There he is. Show the crowd, the crowd, we're all here for him. I've had the pleasure of watching Brandon the past few years as a high school principal. Um, absolutely wonderful kid, respectful kid, a kid with a vision, and we're so proud of him over the years, we've been talking to him. I believe he's still going for engineering, is that right, Brandon? Yeah, still going for engineering. And, uh, this year especially, Brandon wanted to do something different. So, you know, going back to the thing we've been seeing, decided to join the wrestling team on the wrestling team first year. And he just did Bonamo, and, uh, we're so proud of him, we watched, we've been watching a few different matches. How many pins did she get this year, Brandon? Just one? Okay, I, I, I mean, how many pins? Fif- fifteen pins this first year, so. So we're proud of him, um, and, and I plan to go into college, and we're just proud of him, proud of his family. So thank you very much for being here. Here we are, we're all, so fantastic. Congratulations, Brandon.
So, you know. As a young man growing up in the city, being a person in my family, growing up, being a less, also, I mean, the voting, you know, all the, it's, it's great, it's great to see one people doing well, doing in our community. I, I only hope that they come back and talk to me, you know, need things, need some help, the youth, that, you know, and sure, that all these schools, I'm sure there are mentors out there, you know, I hope they come back to be more, to be used in the future. Um, so, and I'm also, uh, let's just, you know, we, we sell it to a, a business owner in town there. Just got here, doing well. We wanted to recognize them out of the new, um, business in the town. Let them know we welcome you, we want you here, we want you to succeed. Your success is our success. So we wanted to honor them. And if you pay to the more, you see the wrestling there, for Ultra Rio. Um, anyone know Ultra Rio, they have a place in Jamaica, which I believe I mentioned. And my daughter just got back, but, uh, he's a player. So we're going to honor them, because we opened today, we're good, we're working, we're working on, here in the town of Warfield. Not in Middletown, the town of Warfield. Um, and to get a hell of a conversation to match with people. So we're going to have Everton Sterling, Blackwell Sterling, and solid Sterling. Now, he's getting food to us now. Every, every time I see him, he wants to feed me. Every time, he wants to feed me. So, um, thank you, having down there, please, bro, please, uh, be a customer of the mall.
Good evening, everyone. We're delighted to be here this evening, um, you know, when we started out for business, because, um, we realized that it takes good food in order to, people to grow. We recognize also that, you know, the authenticity of food is something that a lot of people are not getting. Recognize that because there's so much health issues also. Uh, it's so many different situations that people are facing, we decide to take people with the problem. Some of you who have been to Jamaica, where it's food, and like, popular, which is, recognize that in the blending of spices and food, and to get away from a lot of sugar and all the stards and all those big names that we put in food, and to get the basics, we decide to do it. So, you know, some of the greatest chefs, you know, people that were cooking something, you know, they know to blend spice and herbs and put it together in such a way that when you taste the food, you really taste quality of food. And, um, you know, we're really excited about that. I came down a couple of years ago, diabetes, and I got to here, even from it, by the food and the juice, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, you know, we're here to support and all of the families who are here, for years to support our neighbors and what we want to do, coming from here. We're really excited and delighted to be here. I feel like quality is a great, great thing, I just don't get a chance to meet the audience, and the garden, and they have a lot of problems, and we're going to try to figure it out. Or the others, but, uh, we're delighted to be here. We're here to support you, and to, you know, stop by and talk to us. You know, we'd be delighted to serve you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next we have public participation, and this is for agenda items only. Um, if anyone wants to come up to the mic three minutes, please state your name for agenda items only. Yes, Matt? Doesn't appear we have anyone in the room. Um, next we have, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence? Thank you. Madam Clerk, start with resolution. And the further we do, with the emergency personnel, the written and following for the, we are trying to argue with the municipal service. So move.
Second.
This point.
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, just to explain, we have, we've had some, um, um, the position control report is from the county, and we've had everyone that's employed by the town, and we have, uh, some positions that need to be full time. And in order for the county to change that, they need a resolution from the town board. So two of our clerks were, you know, in the position, not that we have part-time clerks in those positions. Those two positions will be now being deemed full time. Thank you. So.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Yes, and this, this, what this does is, this position control report that the county has of all the jobs that the town has created over the years, um, we have to, there are people on this report that have not been taken off over the years, somehow slipped through the cracks, and in order to take these, um, individuals who have retired, resigned, whatever reason, I know with town, um, usually when someone resigns or retires, they have to have a letter with a form to go to the county. Some of these people are on there for a couple of years, and we don't have that information. So therefore, we do a resolution with all the names, and we send that to the county, and that will take them off the position, um, personal position control report. Okay. Now we go into councilman comments, committee report, we'll start with, uh, point one.
Okay.
Let's be cool.
I'll start with Highway. We're still in the process of repairing the guide rails and filling in potholes throughout the town. This is the time of the year where the roads look really beat up. What happens is, you know, the roads freeze, the water freezes in the cracks of the road. As it defrosts, it, uh, chips away, and they, they really look beat up, but, um, we're, we're filling them in as, as quickly as we can. Uh, we've also started to grade some of our dirt roads because they took a, a beating this winter as well. Uh, we'll, we'll be doing that again in the spring, and hopefully, you know, when the, uh, when the list comes out, hopefully we have a couple of those dirt roads on the paving list, so they're no longer dirt roads. But we're, we're dwindling those down, that's for sure. Uh, we've been trimming and removing trees within our right of way that pose a threat to vehicular traffic. Also remove, uh, or trim trees within our right of way that pose a threat to public safety or may fall on nearby utilities. Uh, however, trees close to the power lines can only be trimmed or removed by our local utility companies. Uh, speaking of the, the traffic list, we're also, uh, paving list, we're also working on that, that's a, that's a work in progress. And I had mentioned some roads, uh, last month that were, that were in consideration. And I would have, uh, turned it over to Lou. Lou, actually, tonight he's with the Honor Flight. He's very big in the Honor Flight, and, and, uh, he's doing that again today. But that list will be getting compiled, and we'll, we'll put it on the website when, when it is complete. Bear with me, I'm forced to have a tablet nowadays and get into the. Wow. Yeah, so. Yeah. Okay, the assessor's office is something I usually, uh, Eric, this is his department, but he's not with us this evening. Um, a reminder from the assessor's office, all low-income senior citizens, enhanced star for seniors, agriculture, veterans, disabled veterans, not-for-profit, commercial and disability with limited income exemption applications are due in the assessor's office no later than Friday, March first, twenty twenty-four. There is a secure Dropbox in the front of the building, or in-person office hours of nine AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. Properties are continued, uh, to be inspected by the department, separate from the building department for inventory, pictures, permits, sales and valuation for upcoming tentative assessment roll. A reminder for new homeowners. You can register for the Star Credit Check with New York State Tax Department at five one eight, four five seven, two zero three six. And of course, as always, any further information needed or any questions, you can contact the assessor's office at six nine two, seventy eight, ten. I'll get to go over the paper. Uh, Veterans Affairs. So I've been talking about the wall over Memorial Park for, what, two, three years longer now? Um, and we got the big grant to get twelve sections. We still have one that's, that's in route, I believe it's in, uh, Vermont as we speak, uh, being cut to size, polished, and will be delivered, I'm being told, by the second week of April. So the committee. So the committee has decided to have the dedication ceremony on April thirtieth at five thirty. Um, that happens to be the forty-ninth anniversary of the ending of the Vietnam War. So I think it's, it's huge and I'm praying for some nice weather so that we could actually dedicate that, that, uh, that monument to, to those men and women. Um, I'll be reaching out to Will Rio, he's the commander for the county, uh, American Legion to try to get as many Vietnam veterans as possible, uh, to that, that function. If you know anybody, I, I'd love for everybody to be there, but if you know anybody who'd serve, you know, by all means pass it along. Uh, post. I'm sorry. Five thirty. We'll be talking because you've got to close the road and all that fun stuff. Yeah, um, post eleven eighty-one, they meet the first Tuesday at seven thirty at the community center. All veterans are welcome, welcome to join. Uh, Parks Department, I know this is another, uh, uh, Eric is a liaison too. I am as well, but Eric usually takes care, but I just want to give everybody a heads up that we did submit paperwork to get a grant for the rail trail that we would like to do down in Circleville Park, uh, going from the dog park, the new dog park there. It would go in basically a mile.
Three quarters. What, three quarters?
A mile and, uh, and back. So, you know, two miles of exercise, I think that's, that's pretty good. But, uh, stay tuned, we'll, we'll see if we, I'm sure we'll get it, but stay tuned when we do get it and we'll announce that. Um, we do have the card property, Harold, Harold's card property. Um, we got moving on that. Uh, had a meeting with Harold and, um, our attorney Will Frank, um, to discuss how to get started, where to get started. Harold feels like he would like to start with the actual house itself. Uh, we have reached out to New York State to see if it is on the historic registry because that makes a big difference. If it is, there's not much we can do to change what's there and any repairs made have to be done a certain way, certain paint colors and, and that whole thing. So, uh, we're still waiting for a response from the state. Uh, we'll be looking for grant money to do whatever we're going to do there as well. Uh, so we, we've got feelers out for that as well. We are looking to form a committee, an arts committee, uh, to regulate, make decisions on what happens at that museum slash art center. Um, this is going to take years to, to complete the vision, but, um, so we are looking for, for residents to, uh, serve in that capacity as a arts committee member. Uh, you could reach out to the supervisor if you'd like, uh, send an email, a letter, what have you. And, uh, we'll, we'll take it from there. We're looking for, I believe, seven people total. So there's that. And then the last thing. Yeah, that's all I got. My comments. So I've been going, Rosie's here tonight, been going to the youth coalition meetings for, I don't know how long. Fifteen years, whatever it is. Uh, and, and she'll give these, these, uh, programs about how, you know, the dangers of social media. Okay, and try to teach the kids to, you know, the dangers of it and, and, you know, how not everyone's your friend on there and, you know, the whole lot. And, you know, I think, uh, sometimes that's, you know, although it's coming from adults, that message. But, uh, we're, we're no better at times. And, uh, there's a lot out there on social media right now. People are talking about things that are going on in town that just simply are not true, a hundred percent false. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna call anybody out. I'm just gonna state that, you know, if you have questions, if you hear something, please reach out to us. Town Hall's open all day, Monday through Friday. Um, I'm very accessible myself. I have, you know, my home phone number out there, my personal phone number out there. Email, I mean, there shouldn't, there should be no obstacle for you to find, find out the truth. So please, by all means, reach out. And, uh, you know, I just feel like, I feel like people get away with, with saying things that are just not true and trying to stir up for, I guess, political reasons, I don't know, but, um, we deal with facts here. So please reach out if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next we got Councilman Vanilla.
Good evening, every, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Awesome. All right. So, um, I finished the goal for us. Um, I've been talking to him on a regular basis, uh, just this month alone, they've hosted, uh, three events this month. So if you ever like want to do an event out there, just give them a call. I'll try and get you scheduled to do some type of catering event out there on the weekends and even during the weeknights, they can probably do that. Um, as I said, it's a great place for a party, uh, cater the fair. Uh, just call, uh, one of the people to contact is known as Patrick Hince. He's like the program person for that area. Um, we've been, uh, doing some garbage and dust cleanup. And, uh, we've had the chipper out for the last few days, cleaning up the paths and stuff like that, getting ready for sprint down. And as of this coming, we're hoping by March, mid-March, that the weather's good enough that people can be hitting the golfers. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
We, um, we'll start with the building department. Whatever we was using last month, I didn't go over there. The summer report is already getting over. Let's see. Uh, so for the month of December, they issued one hundred and thirty-one permits. Um, they actually completed and signed out sixty-two certificates of occupancy or completion. Collected sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Addressed thirty-eight complaints, carried out nine hundred and twenty-nine inspections. And, um, for January of this month, since the past, there's a hundred and seventy-six permits. Certificates issued were ninety-nine, total police collected one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Addressed twenty-nine complaints and carried out one thousand fifty-four inspections. And usually, um, at this time of year, we also go over the previous year's numbers. So for basically twenty twenty-three, um, it's going to be a quick, there were nineteen hundred and four permits. Certificates issued were one thousand one hundred and sixty-three, total police collected, uh, one point six million dollars. Uh, addressed five hundred and seventy complaints, okay, got twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-three inspections. So a great job by that department has O's. Water and sewer. Basically, those, they had four water main breaks last month that need to be repaired. They did the large one on Bristol Run Road, um, that was kind of on hold until we, uh, abandoned on it, till we got the parts that we needed. Uh, and again, the guys did a great job about that one, they did it after hours to offset the, uh, the needs for the medical facilities and it actually took both the highway department crews and the water and sewer crews to do the job, a great job. Heavy rains and heavy flood, flooding experience really hasn't done any damage, so that's good news for us, for the water and sewer for the town departments. The, uh, redevelopment, um, the water tanks is ongoing, as well with the right Kowski well upgrade project. And everyone else, everyone moving forward right there. The wastewater treatment project, as I've mentioned many times, is in full swing, uh, moving as anticipated. Hopefully it'll be done by November, that's well needed. So this is important. In the upcoming weeks, the water and sewer department will be going to all the businesses and residents in the town. When you knock on a door, you get water and sewer and you make a water bill, but they're not knocking on the door. Uh, the department needs to comply with EPA and New York State, uh, Department for Lead Line Survey Inventory. So it's mandatory to have access to all the water meters and service line, which means they're probably going to have to give you a house for your business. So, um, please understand that now. That's going to do two things. Obviously it's going to fulfill that requirement. It's also going to give us exactly inventory where we are in our meter upgrade project. And this has to be completed by October, so we're asking, the town is asking for everyone's cooperation there. There'll be more information about that, the town will be, uh, notification systems, email box, so forth. Heads up, if they have started knocking on doors, probably. As always, the operation maintenance, the wastewater treatment plan, the work, treatment plan is two hundred and sixty-five days a year. So a great job by all the employees to make that happen. I'll see you guys from, uh, in Nebraska, keep you to the bathroom. Two important things. Uh, I do have a report, uh, this is from Councilman Valton, we are committed tonight, this is the police department report, uh, normally reads. So we start staffing, we have fifty-four full-time sworn-in staff. So that's pretty, I remember I started in two thousand sixteen, I think I got twenty-two or three, seven, um, what was it?
Seventeen of them.
Seventeen, that was a low number, so you definitely doubled beyond that. Um, arrests to date for this year so far is down, uh, eight point two percent. Uh, we have a hundred and eleven in twenty-four. And that time last year in twenty-three, we had a hundred and twenty-one, so that's a good thing. The total arrests for years since two thousand nineteen were eleven thousand seven thirty-two, uh, which then was COVID. It was eight forty-two, a little lower, and twenty-one was obviously after COVID. Uh, it was eleven, uh, one thousand one hundred and three, now twenty-two is nine forty-eight, twenty-three is about sixteen, and so far we're at one hundred and seventy-seven. Hopefully we'll be under those numbers. And the police community council, their next, um, meeting will be held on Thursday, March seventh at seven PM. They're actually going to do an R-Team training, uh, during that meeting, so that's probably a good one to attend if you can make it. Police Youth Coalition, uh, is the next meeting is Tuesday, March nineteenth at seven PM at the community center. And these are the goals and objectives that the department has established for twenty twenty-four. So it's higher than full-time records per, to alleviate the deficiency in the department. That was completed in, uh, January of this year. Acquired drone for department use, uh, and implement training. So the drone has been acquired. Several pilots have received their licenses so far, and I believe it's, it's maiden voyage this week, so that's good news. Uh, we shut the kennel for impounded dogs to be in the finds with agricultural and market inspections. It's something that we, we probably just mentioned it, set on the side. So the kennel has been ordered, the pad for the kennel is being scheduled to be constructed, so that's good. And then adopt technologies, the department is working, caddying to acquire a new system to replace our current one. As well as various software systems are bringing value to mental improvements. So again, that department does a great job to solve cities, so thank you for that. Comments? I, I don't really have a whole lot to say, it's kind of want to echo what Councilman Paulie mentioned. Uh, there's a lot of negativity and stuff out there and I think that, you know, that the people kind of try and stir things up for whatever reason, if it's political or not, I don't know. The nice thing I've always said about being a local politician, and I hate to say politician, but a local person who steps up, I think it's a great thing for their community. Um, you haven't heard of politics, parties don't matter, right? We're here for law, we're on everybody. It doesn't really matter who you are, where you come from, what your background. Look, if we can help you, we're going to help you. If you can be right by you, we're going to be right by you. That's why I'm sitting at this board and, you know, give up our time, we can make a lot of money. It's like fifty-six cents an hour, something average, but, you know, it's worth it, it really is, it is our home, right? Fair enough that, so I just want to say that. And, um, I know that there's been some comments about the master planner committee, um, that have been out there that are real just untrue, unfounded. And if you have any questions, you know, please reach out to us and I just want to, the public heads up that the board and, uh, you know, Councilman Vanilla actually sits on that too with me. We've put together some recommendations for the town to consider, right? That's our job, to come up with recommendations where we see to make things, you know, viable in the future. Um, and then the town has to evaluate those. At that point, we would then start scheduled public hearings to the public's input, right? And we're going to keep these open for several months. It's not like something we're just going to do under, under darkness. Um, you know, we want to hear from the public because that's important. The public is the community that we're trying to help. Um, so those will be happening shortly. Probably next month will be a public one, um, you know, not hearing even open before that. And then it will stay open for several months to hear from people with their concerns and their questions and, you know, maybe any tweets that tend to make things perfect. So that is something that simply works. And again, if you have any questions, you can eject at any one of us on the board, you can call town hall at any time. We're here for you, you elected us and we care about you, we care about where you live. So understand that's the reason that we sit up here. Um, you know, for, for no other reason than, um, you know, a lot of walk deals could be as nice as it possibly can be. All right, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Um, first, uh, um, this weekend.
Hold on, can I do one more thing, please?
Absolutely.
I didn't do my sentence last. So Mark mentioned to you, uh, Councilman Paulie mentioned to you about potholes, and I just wanted to plug in quickly. Water is dense, it's a supportive receipt, so when it freezes at zero, right, it's a Celsius or thirty-two Fahrenheit, it's actually expanding. So when it expands in the roadway, it pushes apart from the pattern and breaks it up. Then we drive over the next morning, or the sun comes out and falls and shrinks back down. And that makes the roadway break up, that's where potholes come from, it's called freezing and falling, right? Um, cross wedging, they call it, the keving. So it happens when it gets below freezing at night and above freezing during the day and it falls down the roadway. Why the potholes keep getting deeper? And once they're filled with water and you drive through them, your tires actually splash out the finds in the hole and they leave the opening. So now you create a bit of a drought, it gets deeper and deeper and deeper. And that's why potholes happen in March. Because it's really wet, we get above the below freezing. Now that we have our global climate change, if it doesn't exist, it's happening, it don't change grand thing.
Thank you. I thought I said that. Did I say that? Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, I messed, I messed that in science and everything, I don't know what to go, okay, but thank you. Um, this weekend, um, I will be at Mechanics Farm Firehouse having coffee with the supervisor from, um, ten to one PM. Um, if anyone wants to come have a conversation with me, I've always said this is a great place to have meetings. But a lot of people sometimes don't want to come up and have a conversation or speak up here, this is one-on-one with me. Then on March fourteenth, uh, twelve PM, which is, I believe, a Thursday, we will be having our St. Patty's Day senior luncheon at the community center. And if anyone wants to come, please come, we will have, you know, the traditional luncheon of corned beef and cabbage and Irish soda bread, but not butter. So looking forward to that. Uh, first, congratulations to our recipients here tonight. Um, thank you Bishop Wong for coming out. Um, one thing is, so the town walker has a lot of parks. We have, um, our pickleball courts, which is going to be opening soon. And in order to be fair to everyone who wants to utilize our parks and being, it's a big liability for the town, we're going to institute, uh, we do have it, we really have it, pitched it, a parking system. And I'm hoping to get that out by March first. Um, and what's going to happen is anyone who wants to utilize our parks will have to, uh, come see our town clerk and fill out a permit, provide information that's needed regarding insurance, and we'll go from there. Pay a few tours in town. Um, in regards to my comments. First of all, to the town walker police department, um, great job this past week. We had an incident in one of our local places and they were able to, no one got killed, but they were able to get the person off the street and arrested and in jail. Um, it's a lot of work, you know, to try to go through video and see what's going out there, see what happened and they did a tremendous job. So chief, great job over there. Um, everyone up here, I can tell you, no one does this for money. Uh, and I know that money comes up along the way, but no one's up here doing this for money. Everyone here does it for the community. And, you know, I don't follow the social media stuff that people are putting out there, you know? Um, I am in my office most days, from morning to evening. And if someone wants to talk, come and talk to me, you're more than welcome. My door is open. I do, you come in, I do speak to the residents, I don't hide. Um, there's a lot going on, sometimes I'm busy, I'm having a meeting or just things are going on and I can't speak to someone. But if you call. But if you call, you wanna talk to me about some things. I'll ask. I have no reason to hide. Um people wanna put stuff that lies on social media. I I wanna think that most people are adults, and if something doesn't make sense. Hello, we're smart. So I'll leave it at that because I I really don't follow that and. Whatever's out there is put out there, it's always something. With that. Town clerk? Or you're not a clerk?
I want to know, um in respect of the parks, um we organize the voting calendar the first week of March. So if you're registered and after the voting, um normally by. The end of April, on the agenda for the rest of the order, it's a favorite spot of regulation powers. And anybody who's not there, um it's a beautiful place, and if you haven't come in, um you can just stop and take a walk around. Like I said, we open that time that um, how can you approach it? I mean, of course, we find laws, the permits for um just the regular participation. As usual, um before elections, contact us today and send our concrete board followers. There will be ten uh elections, so the first one is April seventh, which will be a government primary, and very often we're in a short fifteen weeks. Two point six is the general primary, which will not permit us to resort to the general primary in the seventies, um two point six and eleven five, um is the general election. Um the president's in here, um we expect a large turnout, and they are hopeful. Um you can go on their website. Um first primary elections, just for the large primary, so it's a it's a place to the California. Um you can go all over. There's a form that you can fill out, all the information that will loop the game. They pay you to take the training, you go, you sit, it's usually about two hours, it'll be anything, forty-five dollars, and it's two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the day. Yes, it's a very long day, um but it is, um it's one of the jobs that the town got, that we all need to help some folk, some folk. Um you know, to. Continue to do what you do. Um there are places, there's a lot of places in the California, there are places where they tell you that it is. Um so if anybody can help us, and you can call my office, you can call our league, and we'll get um the deputy administration of the public support.
Thank you, Mel. My commissioner's not here today, so we've got. Police chief.
Go to the correct one point. You say you're you say you're busy some of the time, it's not really true. The busy part of the media government here, uh getting busy is true, that's. You're a big man, you do a great job.
Thank you. But I'm always, I'm always willing to talk to you.
At least two minutes.
At least a two minutes.
Inside job, it takes two hours. So um just a few comments real quick. So there's been a lot of men in the town, really counting me, so I can be in there, everyone is all in. So like in my training, I want to contribute um assistance in our department. And it's also going to be struggling with fentanyl patches. Fentanyl patches allow someone to pass another product, receive this fentanyl. Um this may sound unusual, that we're doing the police department offering fentanyl patches, remember the community. But the reason we do this is because fentanyl is flooding our country. It's playing a mention among other among other ways of trying to the national security issue. I don't, I can't say it's a local police group, but the intent of the Chinese is. But we have to be suspect that it may be a a security issue or attempt to make our society weaker, right? And then there's obviously a property model involved here, but they're smuggling poison to our country. Um and the, for what we all know, fentanyl is fifteen times stronger than heroin, heroin a hundred times stronger than morphine. Um and most of the people that ingest fentanyl, especially in those cases, it's taken accidentally. There's a person using illicit weed medication and is trying to do that with weed medication. And instead of being opiporone or or vicodin and stuff like that, it's part of the, it's part of opiporone, it's primarily the same one. And drug dealers have found a way to basically cancel the world. They sell the missiles on the market and to make it strong enough, like find a man to build a way to prevent it all, so they're able to increase their profit. And it's it's killing society, it's killing so many people in our community, the reason we're not getting one or more people, is to kill Prince. It's it's that's all, that's the size. So someone like Prince, a great reporter, or others like that, um for credit, we're throwing on our side. To have anybody out there that's involved in this, my problem. The reason the police, we cannot address all of that problem. There's not enough resources, you know, at the border, there's not enough resources to load three, to go out and guard people, to find a way to something. So it's also been, it's a modern people, as a police, we feel something about doing, you know, staying out of state life. Consequently, making a good fit out of the public, there's not even kind of walk deals, we do all police work around the county, and that's a prediction. But an issue we're having is grandma's and daughter's, specifically an area of freezing road in public corners. In all things, if the teens are left in vehicles and the neighborhood running on that, on that department. The biggest thing you need to do is help prevent crime, is don't be teasing your car running with the car not providing the driving, anything in the other way. Because recently, in only in a couple cases, people have come and taken a car and driven off. Um it's become a pattern for us and we ask the public to help, not to leave, to leave a car running on that department.
It was not me.
I'm sorry, was it?
It was not me.
He lives on freezer road.
Oh, yeah, no, no, but yeah, it's it it it's happening, though. It's it's been problems. Um yeah, well, I didn't say it to you, but.
No, no.
Um in early morning hours, supply point on February eighteen, there was a violent confrontation, this was followed on seventh and Navarre. Uh two people suffered gun shovels, you know, but for maybe us having time to have a position, and then return after the dude, feel the trauma, right? The people suffered pretty good, and the third victim suffered very serious operations ahead. Um they have a great hospital, good hospital staff here, but but nonetheless, um within forty-eight hours of the fact that it was arrested, the subject didn't escape. Two points to it. The first thing that um we, as we found, we committed, after him, you know, if it comes right down, would be enhanced to cause harm to people in our town. I believe that after him, the subject would be forty hours with our commitment of our entire department and our partners in federal, state, and local enforcement agency. Who partner with us on the case. We're not these alone. State police, FBI, our partners, everybody, their partners, we work together, and the city, no town, get us our help. We work with our partners, and we are all drastically committed to a rescue, and to our town and for the rest of our citizens. Second, this is a message for anyone, I G E G business owners in our town, if you're gonna allow this order to continue to get. And not notify us and allow minor or weaker activity to continue to provoke actions. In the interest of fair, honest, and essential justice, we're coming. We're gonna start lobbying your area, aggressive enforcement, so that. No longer, if they're coming to that area, claiming the property, they're still wanting to come back, because they're gonna be probably by us, if they believe the child's on their job. In the very near future. So business owners out there, we're coming in the very near future. I can't put people anymore unnoticed. So when they start calling in a week or two to complain about the very aggressive enforcement acting there, maybe they're running a business, they've taken toll now. Work with us for, if they're having problems, call us and we'll come and address the problem. Don't wait till the problem's settled, we're gonna call, and we're gonna shoot them in the crowd, and they'll like, we're gonna rave in. In this our community. And then lastly, our town walker police club, National Night Out in Front, is the best in the county, all type of institutes of the no count, and the other state department. We're the biggest event. We have great sponsors. We have corporate sponsors, our community, our community council, Brian Davis is here tonight, working with our partners in the community. We have a great, great event here, but many supporters we have, we've been all the credit, the credit is due. But the past couple of years, some of these goalposts has really been a big support of that art, National Night Out, and just as we can present us, we'll check sixty-five hundred dollars. This event costs a lot of money to put on, the sixty-five hundred dollars is gonna go a long way as providing traditional activities for youth and other members of the community here. So look forward to seeing her, but the first season of all this, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next, we have public participation. Three minutes. Most come.
Yes. And I'm wondering what the statuses of the environmental study official on those.
So we had our attorneys put together a R and P, uh I mean, it takes you to sort of bid on sampling, so um I sat down, having had over that. And um put some environmental stipulations in there, give us a little more detail, so honestly. That last year had been the end of June, December. Um supposedly he has that finalized, it just has to go out to big, um then we start the sampling process, the first season would be in the spring. And then it was a four-season study, so that would be another summer, and the fall, and the winter, we could do the cycle.
And we'll be hearing more about that as it progresses.
Well, the sampling, we um parts, uh we'll be collecting data and uh, you know, whatever engineering firm we hire and choose, the bid, we then have to find them, and put it all together. You know, so it'll take time to to get that, but um it'll be on going hopefully soon.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? Recognize Councilman Vanilla. Want a favor? Thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Thank you very much.